Alderman Owens.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Chairman Harless.
Here, and we have a quorum for tonight's meeting. Copies of the agenda are on the podium if anyone would like a copy of the agenda. There are no changes to the agenda. We need approval of the minutes. Are there any additional modifications, changes to the meeting minutes from last meeting? If not, is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bacon.
Yes.
Ms. Hicks.
Yes.
Mr. Saunders.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Owens.
Yes.
Chairman Harless.
Yes, and the minutes from, I guess it's the April meeting, are approved. Our next item is Harvest Church, and Sarah, are you making the presentation?
Thank you. Harvest Church is the item before us as you mentioned. They are requesting revised final site plan to allow for a parking expansion of 130 spaces. Harvest Church is located here at the corner of Winchester Boulevard and Forest Hill Irene Road. It is in the R zoning district. As a church, it is allowed in the R zoning district with a use on appeal from the Board of Zoning Appeals. If they want to increase the intensity of the use on the site, such as a parking expansion, that also needs to come before the Board of Zoning Appeals. They did this, and they received approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals for the increased parking expansion. They did that in May, on May 8th, 2018. And now, the next step before you is then to come to the Planning Commission. Once the Planning Commission makes its decision, if it is approved, it will progress onto the Design Review Commission to go over the details of the site plan. Here you see the church's current layout. They are going through an expansion. However, their congregation is expanding even more, and they need more parking space. The parking addition would go down here, as you will see briefly. This is the current site plan. You just saw the aerial view of that with the current parking layout that is under construction. And then, this is the church parking lot on a current Sunday. As you can see, it's pretty parked up already. This is the area of the proposed expansion fronting along Winchester. There would be a landscape buffer along here to screen the parking from Winchester Boulevard. Here, you can see the landscape buffer, and there is some landscaping down along the retaining, at the bottom of the retaining wall as well. The 130 spaces would accommodate the growing congregation, and the park, and they will still be well within the required parking per the code. Per the code, the church would be required 260 spaces, and with this parking expansion, they would then have 677. This shows a rendering of the parking expansion with the landscaping screen along it. It does not show the additional landscaping down here in this rendering, however, they have revised their landscaping plans, and there will be a landscaping screen at the bottom of the retaining wall as well. As mentioned, this will progress to DRC. If approved by the Planning Commission, the applicant is here if there are any questions.
Questions for staff? If none, would the applicant like to make a presentation? Okay. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this project? Please come forward. Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak against this project? Please come forward. Seeing none. Commissioners, do you have any further questions? If not, can we have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subcommittee met on May 16th, 2018, and recommended that the application be considered by the Planning Commission, subject to the subcommittee discussion, staff comments, and staff report, and the plans and documents filed with the application. The main motion is to approve the revised final site plan for Harvest Church parking lot expansion, 130 parking spaces, subject to the commission's discussion, staff's conditions, comments in the staff report, and the documents and plans filed with the application.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bacon.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Hicks.
Yes.
Alderman Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Saunders.
Yes.
Chairman Harless.
Yes, and the motion is approved. Gentlemen, thank you for the time and effort to get to this point, and we're excited. I think this is a win-win for everyone. Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Chairman Harless. So our second item on the agenda is a request to approve a revised preliminary and final site plan to add an outdoor performing arts venue at the Germantown Performing Arts Center. This area is Zone T5. It was originally zoned R as the G-PAC facility was approved in 1989 and opened in 1994. This is the currently approved site plan. You can see the great hall, the G-PAC facility, the athletic club, and then the pool facility associated with the athletic club. This is the existing parking lot here for the athletic club and G-PAC, then the parking lot for the great hall. So their proposed final site plan includes the circulation and parking plan. This, as we discussed in executive session, is approximately 600 and, let me get to that page. 618 spaces within the existing area, along with another 172 at the great hall, and then the tennis lots that are a little bit further down here, right outside of the picture. But this also shows a fire truck turnaround that has been added to meet the requirements of the fire department to service this area, along with other opportunities that could include future parking and improvements on the right-of-way at Exeter. So that gives us a grand total of 843 spaces that exist currently, between the 618 spaces with G-PAC and at the athletic club, 172 with the great hall and tennis lots, and then another 53 parking spaces that are here at municipal center and the municipal park area that they're located in. This is the tree plan that was included with your packet. It does look at the removal of a few trees in the area, but the goal is to keep a majority of the trees. Most of those that are going will be either those that are in challenging lines of sight for the stage or sweet gums that result in some liability. As we all know, sweet gums are easy to trip on. So this is the proposed landscape plan. I'll show you in just a moment the letter from the Design Review Commission that was provided to give comment on the landscape plan, but in meeting with the chairman, they were satisfied with how the team had beefed up the landscaping plan since the subcommittee meeting. This is the proposed elevation drawings. I've got some other images that the team from Archimania has provided, but I'll just go through these as we look at other views that talk about the bathroom addition that will be part of the, an extension of the existing G-PAC building that will be part of this project so that they can operate in a synchronized fashion with both indoor and outdoor events. They can operate together, or they can operate separately. This is color elevation drawings. The goal is to match the brick of the existing G-PAC building and then add metal and stained cedar elements to it. We'll talk a little bit more about those stained cedar elements, but you can see the overall color palette, and we do have the same material board that was provided at the subcommittee. This is a view of the backside of the stage. And then, this is a color rendering of the stage as one would be looking at it directly in front of what is the soundboard area. So this would be looking head-on. And as we talked about at the subcommittee, this is a screen that can move in and out. You can see the architectural screen that's behind the stage that does a little bit more of shielding both sound and, sound from Germantown Road and Neshoba to the west, and also provides some screening in the lower leaf times of the year. So I'm gonna exit out of this and open up a couple of images. So as we talked about at the subcommittee, not at the subcommittee, but also at the executive session, this is the plan view and the cut sheet for the architectural screen. This is a direct line of sight, as if we were on one side of the architectural screen, and this couple is on the other side. As you can see, the cedar, the stained cedar planks are parallel to the line of sight rather than perpendicular, as a traditional fence might be, so that as one participates outside of the ticketed event area, they can still see in. You had asked about some of the spaces below. This architectural screen does transition in height between six feet and 10 feet around the site, so that will be a third warrant that we left off of your boating block, but we will be adding to the boating tonight. We did apply for that warrant, and that was something that we left out of the staff report. The folks from Archimania have also provided, bear with me here. This is a, you all remember from subcommittee when they showed us the rendering of what the site would look like. I asked them to zoom up on it a little bit so that this would be as if we were 10 feet back rather than 100 feet back looking into it. So this is a closer view of the architectural screen and what one would see if they moved side to side. Viewing through it, you can see the cantilever of the stage area here, and you can see the people through it, and right at this approximate point is the screen that backs up to it. What they also did as part of this is lowered the landscaping. They worked with the landscape architect to lower some of the landscaping, the evergreens and other landscaping materials that would be outside, to again allow transparency from those that are participating outside of the amphitheater space to experience it from both a view as well as having this architectural feature that separates it from a security as well as management perspective, because that was one of the things that we also talked about at the executive session, is how many people is this designed for right now, for fire ingress egress? How many is it designed for at full capacity? At full capacity, they are designing for 1,200 people that would be shoulder to shoulder, elbow to elbow. Right now, the way it's designed, Mr. Dwyer, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's approximately 970 that would be a total that they could get with the existing fire ingress and egress between the two spaces, both inside and outside of G-PAC. With that, Matt Seltzer and John Hallford from Archimania are here for any detailed questions related to the site plan, and I'm also available to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, we have questions for Mr. Ross or staff. Mr. Ross, I have a question. I noticed the TAC committee had several issues and questions regarding this project. Have those all been resolved satisfactorily?
There were responses to all of the TAC comments that were provided by the Archimania team. A lot of what's left unanswered from the TAC committee review will be sorted out at the construction plan review portion. There were a couple of comments that were provided for you at the executive session regarding utilities, and that was also aligning with construction plan review process to indicate proposed water and sanitary sewer, and then looking for a little bit more detail with the permeable paver system, making sure that during construction plan submittal, profiles and other cut sheet materials and subgrade improvements are included, but down to the detailed aspects that we usually expect at construction plan review.
Very good.
Mr. Gualtney could answer any other questions of anything that may have been left unanswered, but I believe that they addressed most of the higher-level comments and are prepared to take care of the rest at construction plan review.
Good. I also noticed the tree board had a comment about replacing some of the trees that are coming down. What is the result of those comments?
They are looking for opportunities, but there are, as mentioned, most of the trees that are coming out were either unhealthy or sweet gums, and so they're looking for opportunities to improve any replants around the edges. You can see where they've sighted out in their landscaping plan, some trees in the outside area over on the east side of the entrance drive, and some at the corner of the west side of the entrance drive.
Is it fair to say that any trees that come down that are good, healthy trees will be replaced somewhere on the property?
Yes, that is a fair assessment, and that is what the G-PAC board is also intending to do as a board.
Very good. Other questions, comments?
Couple other questions for staff. On the line of trees under parks, is, I wasn't clear, is the privet coming out or not?
That is a, a direct answer is no. The privet does serve a purpose right now, and it is a significant screen for both visually as well as to dissipate noise. So right now, the privet will stay until a better solution is come up with. That better solution could be another architectural feature that appears in the woods to dissipate the sound and screen while clearing out the privet hedge, but right now, while invasive, the privet does serve a purpose. And so, until we can come up with a better solution that also works within the landscape preservation area that's also integrated into this site, the privet will remain untouched.
Okay, that was my concern. If it comes out, something needs to replace it because it is a screen. In referring to trees, where on the drawings do we see the 21 replacement trees going in? I know there's a plan with landscaping, but are the, does the landscaping plan include the 21 replacement trees?
It does include the 21 replacement trees.
So we're putting, they're putting in more trees than the 21?
They are putting in significantly more than what's being taken out, but they are taking care to replace what's been taken out.
Thank you.
Other questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I had just a couple of questions. I guess this is a question of Cameron, but has there been any thought, because the screen is as permeable as it is, for people to set up with folding chairs out in the parking lot? And, I mean, if it's, if it's like a really popular show, and, I mean, in comparison to Botanic Garden, you really can't have the cheap seats, but here, you could, like the fireworks, I mean, you could almost set up. And I guess if, because we talked about it in subcommittee, if it's found, which I think it probably will be, but there's not enough food trucks, if the food trucks set out, set up in that driveway along Neshoba on the parking lot, i- has there been any thoughts about, you know, what might happen with people just coming in, you know, and setting up lawn chairs and enjoying the food trucks and, I don't know if that's a problem at all, but I mean...
At this point, the, the G-PAC is looking at that as an opportunity rather than a challenge, and how to address that. They have included in their overall site plan the opportunity to add more food trucks into the parking lot along this entrance drive, and so that would become a traffic management perspective on how to, you know, let's say, as a hypothetical, they could route all the cars and parking along this outside edge, close the inside road right here to everything but emergency traffic, and have food trucks on this front side, and people that just want to sit in their lawn chairs or whatever can sit within the existing entrance drive. But that would be operational management that would be better answered on a event-by-event basis rather than the site plan design.
It's really not viewed as being a potential problem.
No. I, I think that they plan to address that if it happens, but right now, they're really just hoping to make sure that there's opportunity for people to see it, but also so that it's not literally fenced off. You know, they've taken great care to make sure that, as I showed in the cut sheet, that there is a significant amount of transparency in that architectural screen.
And the second question, it's probably more of a question for the design team, but is sound and the control of sound, and I guess that really probably is for you guys. It's easy to turn it down, but...
Come up here and introduce yourselves for the record.
Gentlemen, if you'll state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Matt Seltzer with Archimania, 4166 Barfield Drive, 38117. The question about sound specifically, you're talking about surrounding areas in terms of how the sound's going? So the, the way that the stage is oriented now, it is placed as far down on the site as possible. So the idea is that then any amplified sound is also, thank you, if, the, the way that the stage is set up is that speaker arrays are located at the left and right of the, of the stage, and they're sort of in a bow configuration, where they're trying to hit people closer to the stage that are further down in sort of the natural bowl of the earth, and as you move your way up. So the idea is by pushing the stage down, the least amount of sound is what's aiming straight out of the, the bowl and coming over to the parking lot. And so, when we did the sound study, the idea is that although there is some sound that's traveling out this way, aside from putting a very massive wall or earth berm somewhere, somewhere else, further away, the best way to do that was to locate the stage further down the hill, and then also make sure that the stage was aiming this way and not as originally oriented this way, where, you know, the, the speakers were here and would actually bounce off of the G-PAC building out into the neighborhoods, where you'd get some strange sound and sometimes some amplified sound. So based on that, that's where the stage is located now, and also, the further down it goes, the better it goes with the sound.
Because they're, they're homes that are not too far away.
There are homes that are relatively close. That's, that's true. When we had the, the speaker test done, we, we rode around in neighborhoods all the way around, not necessarily as much the south as we did to the, the east and the north and the west, to try to hear, when we changed things, what was the least impact of the surrounding areas.
So you did a real speaker test? I mean, you didn't just theoretically...
It was not theoretically. We had the, the technical director set up speakers and hoisted them at approximate elevation to where they would be during a performance, and then relocated them around the site, and then played multiple genres of music at different volumes, and we measured the sound in the surrounding neighborhoods, actually went inside to see how much of the sound would actually enter the G-PAC hall at the same time to see how that would go. And the least impact in terms of what we saw that day was this configuration.
Cool.
Follow-up question, Mr. Seltzer. Do you have any idea what the decibel would have been on the west side of Germantown Road?
I do not. I do not have anything that's a particular metric that could be measured for that based on that study that day.
How difficult would it be to do something like that?
I'm not sure that it would be expressly difficult if we conducted a similar test to what we did before and then benchmarked that moving around the neighborhood. I mean, it could be done.
Mr. Ross, I'm gonna put this back in, in your bailiwick, but I'm just assuming that we might have some complaints from neighbors. It'd be nice to know that the decibel rating was acceptable and probably not any greater than what the highway noise is going up and down Germantown Road or something like that.
So, just to make sure I understand what you're asking, you'd like the decibel level measured at, let's call it AM or PM peak, so the highest amount of traffic that is out there, and then...
No, I'm looking for the speaker noise.
Okay.
To get the decibel reading of the speakers playing whatever song you, you know.
Would you prefer Chopin or...
Rock Around the Clock or, you know.
Chopin or Pantera?
But, but I think you understand what I'm trying to get to, is that, you know, that we can then say that the noise level is, is within the measurable, acceptable.
Would the commission be open to having that done as part of the construction plan submittal, that a, a decibel study is submitted as part of that?
Commissioners? I think so, yeah. I don't think we'd have a problem with that. Do we have a, okay? Anything else?
What about noise? Because we talked about it in subcommittee, but noise from Germantown Road, I mean, is that, I guess with the privet screen and the amount of existing planting buffer, it shouldn't be an issue with noise coming that way, I mean, coming into the venue.
It's not necessarily an issue, particularly with amplified sound, and the majority of the things that were, that would be happening in the stage that would be a ticketed event would be amplified sound. Our acoustical consultant, who's done anything from concert halls in universities and cities, you know, would prefer that we build some monument to a wet blanket out on Germantown Road in order to deflect more of the sound, in order to make it more like a concert atmosphere, but G-PAC has determined that that's well beyond the range of what somebody's going to expect in an outdoor venue.
Right. How about limitations on, and I don't know if you can answer this question, do we have a representative from G-PAC here?
They were not available tonight.
Okay. I'll ask the question, is there going to be a cutoff time at night for performances?
Their aim is to work around the same relative schedule that their indoor shows work, which is approximately 10 o'clock.
Good. Other questions?
Questions, yes. Regarding the bike rack, is that a rack on grass, or is it a paved area? Tell me about the bike rack.
The way that we have it is sort of in the entrance, as you come from the north, kind of the, the entrance is kind of facing north and Thornwood, and we have on the rack, we would have it, would not have it in the grass. It would be on either one of our paving surfaces or on, mounted to the sidewalk. And we're, at this point in time, we're evaluating whether or not it's a multiple bike rack or a series of single bike racks that are placed one next to the other in order to make the spacing work for bikes. But we'll follow the, the standard that is set forth, whether it be City of Memphis, Shelby County, Germantown, in order to make sure that those racks are functional.
So is there a target number you want to have?
I think the minimum that we had for, relative to the parking amount, was something like seven spaces. I don't have it written down in front of me, but I think, we're thinking we're going to provide more than that because we want to encourage that kind of transportation for the events.
Yeah, I think a lot of people will choose that to parking.
Well, I mean, we think that that's one of the, if we don't provide it, then you're gonna want to park. We don't want, we want to provide the incentive to not have to use the parking and have some... somebody walking by there.
I agree. I agree. Um, there's a new dump, sorry.
I was gonna say, it also bears mentioning that, uh, there is a, an existing bike rack, uh, currently available at the Athletic Club, uh, as well as a bike share dock also at the Athletic Club. So the, the existing infrastructure is already there. So what G-PAC would be providing under their code requirements would be on top of the existing, uh, bicycle infrastructure that's already adjacent to the site.
Thank you. There's a new dumpster going in. Will that be screened in any way?
In terms of screening, we're talking about the material around, absolutely.
What will it be?
Um, based on what we have, we would not use some separate new material. Um, we would like to use something like a variation on either a horizontal, um, siding that's running around the, the different structures or we could use, um, vertical cedar to kind of work with the, the architectural screen elsewhere. We'd do something that would be in context and not something that would be out of bounds with the other things that are there for sure. If that, if that's...
That answers it, yes, thanks. And with, to the fence or the screen, I understand there's cedar boards. What are the dimensions of a cedar, of the cedar boards you're gonna use?
The current ones that you're seeing there... Wait. The, the ones that are showing there, it approximately like three quarters of an inch thick, um, and three and a half, four inches deep. So if you take a, a, a one by four sort of piece of lumber, right, and you turn it, instead of looking at the broadside, you're looking at the narrow side, that's what you're seeing there. And they're set inside of a, of a metal frame that so they can be attached and secured.
Okay.
And the reason that they don't span from top to bottom is with the smaller pieces of, of material, spanning something that thin, that long doesn't work. So we've broken it up into more manageable spans.
Has this been done elsewhere that you have history with on the maintenance of it and upkeep of it?
We, we've done similar things in other public venues where we're using, um, combinations of metal and, um, some secure fasteners with, uh, natural wood products, um, in addition to some composite wood products and have had good experiences with them.
Can you, do you have pictures of those or anything that y'all can share with us?
Well...
Cause this is hard, we haven't seen this. This just came today and I guess from this and...
The, the pictures that we'd be showing you in terms of using natural materials would not look exactly like this because this is something we're doing specifically for G-PAC.
Right.
Um, typically the way we would do this in terms of the, the, the project and things like that, we would be building mockups in terms of, but that, that's gonna be later on in terms of construction. So any sort of photograph I could give you would not be this exact, um, thing. And so I'm trying to figure out if there's any way we could assure you i- in another way.
Well, it's, I mean, it'd go through design review anyway, so I'm, I'm up to them to handle that.
Uh, design review won't be seeing this.
Okay, well...
Is that correct, Mr. Ross?
Yes, being a smart code project, this, uh, was considered by design review already as part of the, uh, smart code review committee.
Did they have any comments on the architectural...
They had asked for more detail, which is what was provided here.
And this was sufficient to them? This drawing or have they seen this?
They have not seen this yet.
So it will or will not go back to design review?
What we had asked for within the staff comment was for, uh, detail of this level, if not greater, for construction plan review. Forgive me, I'm fighting with the computer. The letter provided by Mr. Brunz is that the DRC recommended approval of the preliminary and final site plan applicant sufficiently addressed the concerns of the committee after their first presentation. Two items that I encourage further explanation, exploration are the screen wall and the proposed turf grass within the venue. Proposed screen wall is as an eight-foot steel frame stained cedar structure. Details have been requested for this element and it's very important to consider the long-term maintenance on this feature. Future wood replacement and staining may not be a priority in the future as the design team sees it today. Our second concern is the selection of turf grasses to be used throughout the project. The landscape plan fails to reference the exact species. Grounds of this setting are important to achieve the desired atmosphere. Short-term and long-term plan for turf needs, uh, should be considered slash included. Short-term is post-event and long-term is annually. Special maintenance contract for this turf and ground should be also considered with this project. Design review commission, Smart Growth Subcommittee, Paul Brunz.
So it sounds to me like they have the same concerns we have with the screen wall. Good.
Yes, and staff did include with comments for further details on maintenance and, uh, other concerns related to the screen walls that you're asking about as part of the construction plan review process.
So we don't have a picture of what we're being asked to approve? Is that correct?
No, you do have a picture.
We have a picture, but he said this was not representative. What would it be?
No, what I'm saying is, I, I don't have a picture of this exact fence built somewhere else that I can say, this is how it works. And this is like seventeen years ago that it stood there. So he was asking for some sort of, um, empirical evidence that a, a similar product or something like that would have been done as opposed to this custom thing. So that is an illustration of exactly what it would be. I'm sorry, but in terms of answering your question, um, we do not have a, an exact photo of something similar to that.
Mr. Ross, we would normally be looking at material mockups, uh, in other smart growth, uh, like Treavure or Thornwood, they brought mockups to us of the materials being used.
And we do have material mockups. Uh, they were shown at the, uh, Smart Code Review Committee Review, Review Committee meeting and...
Except for the fence.
It's, well, the fence material was on the material board. Uh, information that was requested was a, more of a cut sheet, uh, information that is provided here tonight. But the stained cedar, the, uh, bronze metal, uh, material, all of those were provided as part of the material board.
I guess I'm having a little trouble with, um, Mr. Brunz's letter, uh, to us. Uh, I don't know if that was a ringing endorsement that he gave us or, uh, questions that he had that he wanted answered before we moved forward.
Uh, recommending approval of the preliminary and site, final site plan, but looking for more information to be provided as we finalize our review of this. Say, uh, I would, while Mr. Brunz isn't here and I don't wanna put words in his mouth, I will say that our staff report also recommended essentially the, uh, same thing in terms of looking for more information and specific, uh, materials designed sheet to be included as part of the construction plan so that as those construction plans are reviewed, we can see the level of detail that they've started to provide, uh, here with this sheet that would be included on the construction plan so that the construction inspector, uh, and, uh, project engineer can also verify that it's been built to the specs and will be, uh, viewed as this and those materials are stained appropriately and installed correctly.
A question for you, will we have another chance to look at this project?
Uh, no, this will, if approved, the warrants, the three warrants that you're considering tonight, the approval of the civic space, the parking considerations associated with civic space and the, uh, varying height of the architectural screen. So the deviation from six dash one oh two, uh, within the ordinance would all go to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for consideration. And after that, this project would move into construction plan review.
Is there an opportunity to present this drawing to the members of the DRC who are at the subcommittee, um, level prior to the Board of Mayor and Alderman approving those warrants?
Uh, there certainly will be.
Okay.
And we could do it as early as tomorrow, uh, or as June fourteenth. Uh, the design review commission has their own subcommittee for their June meeting, so we could also talk about it at that subcommittee level with all the members that are available for that Thursday, June fourteenth, subcommittee meeting.
Would they have the authority then to alter or change that if they felt it didn't...
If the planning commission is comfortable giving them that authority, uh, to work with staff and, uh, do that, uh, to a, a certain extent administratively review it with the members of the Smart Code Review Committee, so Mr. Landwehr and Mr. Brunz. To make sure that they're comfortable with it.
I have a question, Mr. Seltzer. Uh, I guess two things here. First, the, the screen varies from six to ten feet. Is that correct?
Uh, that's correct, approximately six to ten feet as it travels around the side.
Where are the variations located? Where's the six foot? Where's the eight foot? And where's the ten foot at?
On the eastern elevation.
Let me get this back up for you, man.
You wanna, which reference, which are, what you refer, which drawing are you referencing them?
We can just, we can just, actually, we can use this site plan if that's okay.
Well, I can't really see that far.
Well, okay, so the, very simply, the, the part of the, the screen that is facing Exeter and the east and the parking lot is all at a relatively even, uh, eight feet. So it's all basically, because it's coming off of a walkway, it's eight feet. The, the northern boundary that kind of runs along Neshoba is somewhere between eight feet and nine feet because if, if you travel down the, the road there, the ground pulls down.
Before you stop, are you trying to tell me basically the top elevation maintains the same and the bottom is where it varies in depth?
Yes.
Is that what you're...
I, I am, but...
Cause I was picturing something stepping up where you're telling me the top of it is the same elevation all the way around and it's only varies because of the terrain itself at the bottom of the screen.
That's, that's correct. And in certain parts of, they actually make those things lower where the, the, the screen at the entrance would be the highest screen overall, great, but you're correct. We're kind of m- matching it where it hits the ground where the ground lies, but the top would be even.
So looking at it on the average, we're looking at eight foot to the top of the screen as it stands right now.
That's right.
Okay. That makes more sense than being eight, nine, ten feet.
I agree.
Uh, I'm, I'm picturing it stepping up.
We just, we just didn't wanna, depending on what side of the fence you're on and how the terrain was, we didn't wanna misrepresent that height to the, to the...
What is the purpose of the screen?
The, the functional purpose of the screen is just to provide a perimeter that G-PAC can control for ticketed events.
But you're allowing everybody that wants to walk up, look at through.
That's correct.
I, I'm just wondering, you know, you know, we're talking about parking spaces, we're talking about, you know, limiting who can come inside, but we can set our chairs up right outside there beside the food trucks as part next to it and watch what's going on. It, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense there.
I do think they're also trying to secure it, um, after hours relatively to be able to shut it down so that it's not accessible to everyone.
Okay, that makes more sense. And also I, I assume that is there a liability, I, when we presented it to the subcommittee, there was some, uh, comment in regard to being able to serve various types of beverages within that screen area. Is this also something that is, that is for liability purposes to keep it from being throughout the...
I would assume based on our, our previous experience in other retail establishments that, that would also help this in terms of being able to serve inside a perimeter.
Okay, well, it's making a little bit more sense. The only thing that, that bothers me, and I guess it's my twenty years of being on DRC, is that what you're presenting to us tonight is far from what we need to have to approve something, in my opinion. Uh, I would have liked to have a whole lot more detail. We're starting to get the details now, but we're still having details yet to be coming. And we're putting a lot of emphasis on someone else approving it down the line when this body is the one that should be approving it. And I have some reservations that we're pushing this maybe just a little too fast without having the proper details to where we can say, yes, this is what we want or no, this is not what we want. So at the end of the day, staff, inspection, and the citizens of the community know what you're getting.
Understood.
Other comments?
I agree with Mr. Saunders. I've struggled with, with visualizing some of the things and that the drawing is, is a start, but I, I can't see that fence. I Googled it, I even tried that, but, um, I am struggling with knowing everything I feel like I should know.
Going forward tonight, I think we have, uh, several options. One is to vote on this project as it's been presented. One is to, uh, defer the, uh, vote until we get further information, data. And the third one would be for the applicant to withdraw.
If, if I may, uh, Mr. Harless, uh, as well as the other members of the board, in working with this applicant, this is not your standard building. It's not your standard project. Uh, you know, what you have in front of you is at its core, a, uh, amphitheater, a, a park. And as Mr. Seltzer, uh, alluded to, the architectural screen serves a couple purposes. One, to be aesthetic and two, to provide some security, uh, both in terms of capacity. So let's say for the fire marshal, uh, also for after hours so that, uh, nefarious activities can't happen, uh, just in there organically. And then three, to, uh, control the use of alcoholic beverages passing in and out of these gates. What's been provided to you is renderings of what the project is going to look like, including the material boards and the material samples. Uh, they have answered all the items on the design review checklist as referenced within your agenda sheet. And they've provided you with the information that is available in terms of the custom architectural screen that they will be creating with this cut sheet. Uh, so the comfort level from staff is that there is information that will be necessary to finalize this project and move it to construction plan review. But as staff, a- at least from, uh, my perspective as department director and the staff who, uh, has been managing this agenda sheet, uh, getting to you is what other information and level of detail are you looking for that, uh, it needs to be viewed at the planning commission level that you're not comfortable with being reviewed at the staff level, working with, uh, design review commissioners to make sure that that level of detail is provided? Because we do have the material board, uh, if we could take a recess and I could go grab it from, uh, the office. And we also, uh, again, this is not a building, this is, uh, an outdoor area. So i- it's a unique project in a unique area on city property that, uh, has some unique opportunities and challenges associated with its review.
Thanks for the comments, uh, Mr. Ross. Uh, you know, I think this board, uh, has options and, uh, we've been asked to review these projects, okay? And while we have full, uh, support of the staff and, and we believe in everything you guys do and we look for you for recommendations, at the end of the day, we still have to vote on them. And so I was pointing out to our commissioners that we have several options here. And if we, I think you've heard a couple of commissioners concerned about having not enough information and maybe we do need to take a recess to get that information or, um, uh, there may be some other way to get to this. But, uh, there's some, there's some concerns right now and I think you're hearing that from us. So, uh, with that said, uh, commissioners, any comments?
Well, I think we've got a recommendation from the DRC to approve this, giving, given two items that they left on there, the, the sod and the fence. And all of us, it seems like just collectively, just from the discussion, we've all got issue with the fence, uh, architectural element, screening, whatever you wanna call it. Um, and we're splitting hairs on that, but, uh, I, I think... But I think that we've got a system in place where the DRC reviews things, and yes, they recommended approval, given that information, which they haven't gotten that information, and I think we're in the same boat here. So I appreciate staff and everything that they've done, but I don't think that we've gone through the proper procedures of getting the DRC's full approval without them seeing that, that fence detail. And it is a unique structure, and it is a unique project, and it's a unique fence, screen wall, sorry. It's a unique screen wall, and the fact that you don't have pictures of one that's done before, I think that's great. We want, Germantown wants to be new and fresh and clean. I'm in the construction business, and maintenance, long-term, is key, and that seems like maintenance. I don't know how they're, they're fastened on there, how if, you know, people are wanting a view into the, to the venue to see a show, are they climbing up on the thing? I mean, I've got young kids, they're going to climb all over that thing if their slats on there can knock them out, and then over time we're replacing them, and I, I just would like to see if there is a mock-up of something that is going to not only look good from day one, but look good from 10, 15 years from now.
Alderman Owens?
Let me make a suggestion. Is it possible, because it seems like, I, I think the architectural feature is cool, I like it, I think it's, it's going to be unique to Germantown, but it does seem like there's some concerns. Is it possible that we vote on the project, but, but hold on the warrant for the fence and have them come back to us just for that fence? Is that a possibility?
I believe that that's something that we as staff could work on to get a little bit more information and still be able to move this project forward and hold that warrant back so that that can come as a separate warrant application at a future meeting.
I'm okay with that.
What about the TAC comments? Is that something that staff can take care of?
As indicated, that's something that staff usually takes care of at the finer grain detail of construction plan review. And I, to address some of Mr. Clark's concerns, you know, down to the fasteners, while I appreciate your expertise, that's also something that we would look at at the construction plan. So my concern is, in what I would request of the Planning Commission, is direction to staff and the applicant of what further detail of this architectural wall, because just asking to provide more detail is a little ambiguous, because if it's down to the fasteners, that's construction plan review process and not necessarily the purview of Planning Commission. I understand your interest in understanding the sustainability and longevity and maintenance plan, but that's part of our internal administrative review process that is currently in place. And I would ask for a little assistance to our sister department at G-PAC to help them understand what information you're looking for on this architectural screen so that they can come back with the right material rather than just, we need more details.
For me, this is the fence that I, I don't feel like I have enough info, screen, architectural feature, sorry, that I don't have enough information on. I'd like to see elevations all the way around with the clearance at the bottom marked and the actual height from the ground at the top of the architectural screen, on at least three sides, all the three sides that it's on. And then the material, more, maybe that screen, maybe the mock-up board would help me if I could see that, but the actual dimensions of the boards.
Mr. Ross, that may be enough information that you've got there, we just can't see that.
Commissioner Bacon?
Mr. Chairman, I've just got a handful of comments. I think, I think it's plenty of information, in my view. I think it's a really creative solution. You've got to have a controlled perimeter, certainly if there's alcohol sold inside the perimeter, and then you're selling tickets. I think it would be abysmal if it was a solid wall, I mean, you'd be sitting in a box. So, you know, there are probably, you know, some issues relative to maintenance and, I don't know, ultimately spraying those pickets after 10 years, but, but I think it's a pretty creative solution. I like it, and I think there's, there's a lot of information there relative to how it's constructed and, you know, and what it looks like, and, and whatever the permeability was that was mentioned in the subcommittee, whether it was 60% or something like that, it's pretty open, so, you know, it's-
The mock-up that you see here is about 70%.
Or 70%. So it's really, it's not visually a barrier, it's physically a barrier, but it's not necessarily physi, I mean visually a barrier, which I, I think it's a great solution. I really like it.
If we want to think about the window glazing, Ms. Pounder, please correct me, but in the smart code area, you're looking at a minimum of 60% for windows? So if you look at this, they're providing 70% transparency with this architectural screen, so it's more than your standard window in a smart code window project. And looking at the detail, as I zoomed in on this, Ms. Hicks, at the bottom, you've got four inches with a one-inch steel support that would be dark bronze. The cedar pickets would have a penetrating sealer and clear coat, and this bottom portion would vary with the slope, but you're looking at a two-foot, five-inch panel on the second panel, two-inch, or two-foot, three-inch panel on the top panel, and then a three-foot steel bar that would be painted in the dark bronze as a steel frame that would go all the way around, and they would be in 10-foot segments. This is showing eight feet measured from the finished floor elevation at the plaza level, so this particular one.
You'd said 70%. Is it 50% transparent or 70%?
No, this is 70% transparent per Mr. Seltzer's quick assessment, but the code itself, the smart code, when you're thinking about, if we're, if we think about this as a building, the glazing requirements for window transparency is 60%.
Oh.
And so this is providing 70% transparency, so you can see into the grove space 10% more than you can see inside a standard smart-coded building.
So it'll be 70% transparent?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, we may have some folks that want to talk from the audience, too. We may want to offer that opportunity.
We certainly will. Are there other comments from the commissioners?
I'd like to make a brief comment. I tend to agree with Mr. Bacon. You know, the problem we have with, you know, trying to approve something like this, and I tend to agree with you, Mr. Ross, is that it's not our responsibility and our desire to make sure it's built correctly. It just, we didn't have enough information, you know, when you start talking about eight, nine, 10-foot things of this nature. It appears that, and once again, I'm looking at a rendering here of the, of the fence material, although it's, you know, 30 inches or less on the top two and varies probably up to four feet on the bottom, I don't see that being a problem in regard to a whole lot of warping and things of this nature and putting in on, the way it's going in there. But it appears like they're putting it in random spacing. Is that true?
That would be true. I would assume that this would be a repeating pattern as the panels go. I can pull the video up again.
You know, I guess the thing you're, you're looking at, number one, is that, and, and, you know, here we are getting into construction, and I guess, you know, that's my mindset, too, with, oh, Mr. Clark, you start building something, you start worrying about it. It appears that, you know, you, what is the maximum space you have, and, I mean, is that four inches or less, so you don't have someone sticking their head through it? Is it, you know, what, what is the randomness of the maximum of it that you have down through there?
I'm looking, I'm not sure that we have dimensioned, but we could certainly update that drawing to where it is. The, the idea is that there, most of them are between, but you can see there are some places where instead of having four or less in between, they're much, much wider so that you can't get something stuck in there. I don't have it scaled right there, and we don't have it dimensioned, but we could easily provide that detail if we needed to.
Just to comment, there are safety regulations that say how wide-
Four inches.
Is it four inches?
Four inch sphere.
Sphere, which makes it less than four inches. Centralized, centralized, four inches, basically a four inch sphere, but, you know, if you make it larger than that, you know, I know that's on handrails and all, you know, and we're not talking about that, but if you're going to have people on the outside looking in, you just, you know, I think we need to take that into consideration, too, is, is what, what are we doing here, and, and, you know, are we putting the city in a reasonably safe, you know? But, because that, again, when you start bringing it closer together, you're starting to talk about the percentage going down, but if you get it at 60%, even then, we'd be equal to the, what you'd have for the percentage for a wall that would have windows in it. That's what we're talking about.
That's easily something that design could provide for.
But it can't go more than four inches?
Clear, is what we understood. Basically, if we're, if we're going to hold it up to what a, a guardrail-
Yeah, because I think whether it's horizontal or vertical, it's still, you know, you can't have a child get their head caught.
If you're clim, if you're capable of climbing on it, which, you know, is there, you don't want, no matter how well you design, it's hard to design 100% against something like that, but you certainly want to start with a basis of design to minimize something happening of that nature. And I think, you know, if you're looking at a four inch sphere and then making it random, you know, as you've got, it appears at the top, the, the, basically, as, as far as the vertical is concerned, they're random between the panels also, so that, you know, that would give us some design feature. My biggest concern was, I just don't want to see a great big old wall sitting up there, you know, and this is really just a separation. You know, you've answered a lot of the questions that I had some fear of. I think the one that I, that I still have some reservation over is that, although you did some testing, do we have that information actually spelled out exactly what that test showed us in regard to, I mean, what we're just saying is-
We have a summary-
-it's here and over there, or do we have a certain level?
We have a summary of their, their sound test that was provided to us.
Okay.
Commissioners, any other questions? If not, we will go to the audience.
Can I ask one more? I'm sorry.
Certainly.
Would you repeat what you said about the height going around? You explained it to Mr. Saunders, and I didn't catch it all.
It's okay, it's no problem at all. If, as you travel around the site, the, the grading is falling towards Germantown Parkway. So while at the east off Exeter, we have that eight feet right at that entry plaza, as you move around, the top of the fence, the fence architectural screen, it moves, but it's level at each elevation. When it's at the stage, if you're at the backstage, it's eight feet on the side of the road that, if you're backstage, but if you're in the audience, since it goes down beyond the grade, it gets taller because it's trying to meet the ground, so there's not some large gap at the ground where light and things can do. So in those locations, that's when it's 10 feet. If you're on one side of the fence, screen, it's, it's eight feet. If you're on the audience side, it just looks taller because we carry the material down to make sure you can't see backstage, if that's, that's the way it works. So the, the height varies. The top of the screen works its way around, and so steps down as you go westward, as you get closer to the stage. But at the tallest point, when you're at the eastern elevation, it's eight feet, and as it marches down into the bowl, it kind of lowers on the way down.
You can see some of the stepping at this point here, where, as Mr. Seltzer pointed out, they're taking the material down to the grade, but then it steps at this point where the top cap is a little bit lower, but it's still stepping down, following the grade along.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Seltzer, thank you. At this point, I'd like to ask the audience if there's anyone who would like to speak in favor of this project, if they will come forward. Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak against this project, if they will come forward? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Yes, please.
My name is Sharad Chitalia. I live on 1787 Bollywood Lane, that's, runs parallel to Exeter, and I've been a resident of Germantown for 36 years, and this is the first time I'm in this room, and I wish I was more active. And this is the first notice that I've received about this project. I didn't realize that it was so far along. And, you know, I guess this affects what we say not in my backyard, and this is literally and figuratively in my backyard, because my backyard faces this proposed site. And so my neighbors and I, I wish we had some more that couldn't make it, but we are very concerned about the noise. And in 1982, when we moved to Germantown, we moved because we wanted a small-town atmosphere. Unfortunately, the green space is being reduced, you know, slowly but surely, because my backyard to Germantown Road was completely wooded, and now we've got the G-PAC, and I would love to walk, because I go down to the shell, which is similar to this thing, and I would love to go down and walk, but, you know, we are really concerned about the decibel level. I don't know whether it's too late at this stage or not, but I wish we had received a notice when this thing, I had to go online and find out about this project from Commercial Appeal, September 21st, 2017, so, and of course about the traffic also, because, you know, 4th of July, of course, we have patriotic citizens, so we don't mind people parking on our street, and we get a nice view, but that's just once a year. I don't know how many concerts will be held, and I'm not an architect, so I can follow, you know, all the drawings here and what it looked like, but I still love that green patch that we have there, you know? So at this stage, you know, and I think our neighbors would concur. And my hearing is bad, and I guess I didn't follow everything that was being said. I don't know whether it's acoustic, but, so this is what I had to tell you. One is the noise, you know, alluded to the decibel level, and of course, I have no idea of, you know, whether the studies have been done or where I could find, get some more information if that was done, as well as traffic, you know, because that's a big concern for us, and I'm not even sure who's proposing this project, and I don't know where to get this information. So if I get this information, then we can make an informed judgment whether this would be per se, you know, we'd love to have it, but like everybody says, not in my backyard, so that's my main concern. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak against this project?
Hi.
Yes, sir, if you'll come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name's Jerry Rayner. I live at 1792 Bollywood, right across the street from Sharad. My, I, I don't consider myself to be speaking against it necessarily, really just trying to understand. Is it acceptable for me to ask questions? I just wanted to understand what was said earlier, or is this just to make comments?
Just make comments, please, sir.
Okay, then I'll say it like this. So I didn't understand exactly if new parking was going to be added, and I understand you can't answer that. So if there's not new parking going to be added, and all three of those venues, well, what will be, I guess, three venues at that point, you would have this new amphitheater, you would have the G-PAC, you would have the athletic center, all being used at the same time with no added parking, and maybe food trucks also there at the same time. It seems like what will happen, and I know they mentioned, I did understand the description of all the parking that's on, but like the tennis court parking probably won't be used at that time for people coming to be at the amphitheater. They will probably pour onto Exeter and the streets that are surrounding there, I would guess. So it's a little bit of a concern, and like Sharad said, we, you know, we get that on 4th of July every year, and, you know, we expect that, but that could be another issue. And then, so that, that was one concern. The, the noise, and I'm mentioning some of the same things, but the noise, I'm curious, I don't know if we have a noise ordinance in Germantown. I'm never flirting with a noise ordinance myself, so I don't have to worry about that. But I was, I'm curious, I know we talked about, or you guys talked about doing a study, there's already been somewhat of a study, and I definitely heard that the noise from the amphitheater is not going to imp- is not going to impact the inside of the G-PAC, which I'm sure is good for the G-PAC. But I didn't completely understand what the impact to the surrounding area would be. We can clearly hear, when they have the music in the park, we can sing along with that music. And it's no problem, you know, that goes on, it's early in the, relatively early in the night, probably to seven or eight o'clock or whatever. I heard that this was going to aim to end at ten P.M. I don't know if that means, you know, okay, we're aiming for ten, but it might be eleven. You know, I don't know what that's gonna be like. So the noise, my question about the noise ordinance. If my neighbor is not allowed to go over a certain decibel level, should also this amphitheater not cause the decibel level to go over that level? I'm just using that in my mind. Is that a metric that we should use to say, is this acceptable or not? And I guess there could be a concern as well, if we move forward and we say, well, we're just gonna make that part of the construction plan or whatever. That to me says, we're moving forward and we'll do this just to check it off the box, but it's not a decision point anymore. So it's just a little bit of a concern. So those two things, just a side comment, as I listened to all the discussion over the gate, or what, I'm sorry, whatever the right term for that is, the, anyway. Those four inch gaps, if there's a concern about alcohol passing back and forth into and out of the venue, those gaps, I would think, if I was cheap and I wanted to get alcohol in without paying for it inside, I would say, hey, honey, I'm going in, I'll meet you at the back, you can pass, you know, whatever through. So just a thought on that, but I think that was it. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Mr. Ringer, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Mr. Ross, do you have a comment? Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak against this project? Yes, sir, come on up.
One other request is if it gets to the point where you have to vote on this, I would ask the members to consider, would they do it if it was in their backyard? So I just keep that in mind before you do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Alderman Owens?
Yeah, just for you guys and the audience's information. So where we are right now is we are at the planning commission level. And the next step in this, if it was to be approved tonight, it would go to the board of mayor and alderman. And because there's some warrants or deviations from the code that are being requested. One is for civic space, the other, I think, is for the architectural feature, and then finally for the.
The parking.
Parking. And so I think in between, if approved tonight, I'm not saying it's going to be, but if it is approved tonight, then between that time of now and then, I think Mr. Ross, you guys could get with Mr. Ross, he could answer all those questions, including the noise study information and probably the architects as well as Paul Chandler, the G-PAC director, who could answer all of your questions, hopefully to your satisfaction. Then if you're not satisfied, again, you'll have another opportunity to speak to your elected representatives, of whom I am one, and at that board of mayor and alderman meeting in which we would be looking at the warrants.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman, you had made a suggestion as to the issue on the architectural fence. Fence. Do you want to pursue that with a motion?
Based on what I've heard, further explanation, I'm comfortable with it. Like I said, I think it's a unique and cool feature, and I'm not as concerned about it. If other members are, I would defer to the will of the group, but I'm comfortable.
Commissioners? Seeing no one want to make a motion, we will now go to the warrants that are being requested. Do we have a motion? You want that one first?
Mr. Harless, if I may, I think it would be helpful to answer one of the audience concerns as it relates to any noise ordinance that the city has.
If you could address that?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Please.
Certainly. Let me get the noise ordinance out of the way, and then I'll have to grab my notes to go into the detail on the parking. As far as the noise ordinance goes, the city does not have a specific decibel level-driven noise ordinance. There is a noxious noise ordinance that falls within the police powers. So a car that is driving through that is being seen is too loud, or a neighbor turns it up to eleven while they're watching Spinal Tap, that's too loud, and the police can be called on that. But in terms of noise ordinance that's within consideration of development projects or outdoor venues like this, there is nothing that has a metric scale associated with it.
But I think the comment regarding the stop time of a program is certainly reasonable and something that, as we go forward, Mr. Ross, that I would hope that is stressed to G-PAC.
Yes, but the other thing to consider is that G-PAC is a nonprofit entity within the city's umbrella. And while the ten o'clock stop time was an estimation on my part, the city does have a significant amount of influence on how these events would be managed, the noise levels, the start times, the stop times, and those types of things. And those will all be considered from the operational and programmatic design that moves forward once the site plan is moved forward.
Thank you.
As it relates to the parking, the archimania, the architects with this project, did a parking count evaluation and summary. And while the SMART code does not have any requirement for civic space parking numbers, it's a warrant to allow this park, this civic space, to exist within the available parking around it. They looked at the factors, considering that there is a possibility, if the greatest music act ever came forward, that two hundred and seventy seats could be at a sold-out simulcast event. And when you consider the parking requirements in the commercial general section, you're looking at at least one off-street parking space for every three seats in a public or private facility that is designed for audiences. So when you consider that, you have a requirement of six hundred and ninety spaces that is required for that. The existing spaces at G-PAC and the Athletic Club is six hundred and eighteen. Couple that with another hundred and seventy-two spaces at the Great Hall and the tennis lots. That results in another fifty-three spaces at Municipal Park. You're looking at existing eight hundred and forty-three spaces that are currently available to serve events that surround the area that would not bring them onto Exeter or onto Bowlingwood, that are available for people to park off-street. The, again, programming aspects of the Great Hall and the Athletic Club and the Performing Arts Center are coordinated between the different directors of those venues so that they don't all have a maximum-capacity event that occurs at the same time. That's part of, again, the benefit of all of those organizations being underneath the city's umbrella so that we can all communicate, coordinate, and have influence over one another's programming so that you do not have an event where every parking space is maximized. But with a requirement of six ninety and eight hundred and forty-three spaces available, if you include the fifty-three at Municipal Park, or seven hundred and ninety spaces, if you just include those that are available with the Great Hall, the Athletic Club, and the existing G-PAC, they more than cover the three space, or one space for every three seats requirement that's within the Germantown code.
Pardon me. So bottom line, to answer some of the questions from the audience is that we meet the requirements of the county code as well as the City of Germantown code regarding parking for the venues that we have?
Yes, sir. If you were to look at the same requirement, looking at indoor/outdoor audience facility requirements by the county code, they require to look at it at a four, one parking for every four seats. So that drops the parking requirement down to five hundred and eighteen spaces. So if you think about an indoor/outdoor, which is exactly what this is, looking at the Shelby County level, you're looking at five hundred and eighteen spaces versus the three seats per one space at the Germantown audience requirement having six hundred and ninety spaces. And again, seven hundred and ninety spaces available between the Great Hall parking lot, the Athletic Club, and G-PAC parking before you have to get into surrounding neighborhoods. Now, behavior of people that come to these spaces can be modified by our friends at the police department and other places to influence the way that people park and to drive the parking to those existing seven hundred and ninety spaces that are available.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Ross. I noticed.
I just wanted to point out one thing on my, on parking. Fourth of July, we take all six hundred and eighteen spaces away from anybody parking when we have the fireworks there because fire department restricts anyone coming into that parking lot. So you're taking six hundred and eighteen cars to push out into the community, which is a lot of cars. So taking that in consideration, this is not the normal event that you would have around there like the Fourth of July.
Good comments. Thank you. Mr. Ross, I noticed Sarah brought a board?
She was kind enough to go and grab the material board.
Thank you, Sarah.
This is the cedar length that would be on the screen.
So the stained cedar would be used as part of the architectural screen? This is.
Is that the actual dimension? I mean, I know not length, but.
Not length, but the, and Matt, feel free, is this the width of the board that would be used?
Slightly left deep, maybe a little bit much because of the way they're fitting to the steel frame. Proximal thickness, yes, but in terms of depth, a little bit.
How many, I think you talked about this in subcommittee, how many shows are we anticipating at this venue per year?
Show-wise, I believe that Mr. Chandler was looking at, you know what? I'm going to pull the I don't remember card.
I thought it, I thought it was eight, eight, eight? Yeah. Yeah, I think that's the number I remember.
And that would be a ticketed show. Now, he also talked about community events. So showing, you know, a concert video that would be free for the community on the video screen would be an unticketed event that could be something that just randomly happened on a Thursday night. I say randomly, it would be programmed sufficiently and notified through the various means of communication that the city has.
Commissioners, other questions? If not, do we have a motion for the project?
Mr. Chairman, this is a project that resides in the SMART code zone. SMART code review committee met on May sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, and recommended that the application be considered by the planning commission, subject to the subcommittee discussion, staff comments, and the staff report, and the plans and documents filed with the application. Letters of recommendation from the DRC, economic development representatives will be provided, and have been provided, at the June fifth, two thousand eighteen, meeting. We have a main motion, and then we have three warrant requests. The main motion is to approve the revised preliminary and final site plan for the Grove at Germantown Performing Arts Center, G-PAC, subject to the commission's discussion, staff comments, and conditions in the staff report and the plans and documents filed with the application.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bacon?
Mr. Chairman, I'm voting to approve. I think it's a very exciting project. It's a great location. It's a really interesting use adjacent to the G-PAC. As I stated in the subcommittee meeting, programmatically, from a plan standpoint, I think we may find it's a little small, but that's not really our decision tonight to vote on the program size of the venue. I really like the design. I like the architectural design. I like the details. I like the thought that was put into the architectural feature screen around it. I think that the parking issues have been addressed. There's ample parking. I believe there will be some spillover parking on the streets, but I think at the end of the day, most people will probably find more convenient parking in the existing lots. Regarding the sound, I'm a little bit concerned with that as well. I have friends that live close to the Botanic Gardens, and it's pretty loud. But the interesting thing about the sound is, is that it can be mitigated. Basically, it can be turned down. So if it's a problem, or the speakers and the acoustic design at the facility can probably be mitigated relative to controlling sound. And I am curious to ultimately, I'd like to see the sound reports and the sound study, but I think it's impressive that that's been done and relative to, you know, understanding the impact of the sound issue. So I'm voting to approve the main motion.
Mr. Clark?
I might go also with Mr. Bacon says, well, you know, I think it's good for the city to have this in here and it'd be good for the community to have a place to go like this. And the design that they put forth, I think is great for the city, so I'm voting yes.
Ms. Hicks? This will be, I think, a gem for that civic space, yes. Mr. Saunders?
I will be voting yes with most of the items that's already been mentioned. And I do agree that it is a gem that could be used in what we classify as municipal center that we have for all our citizens to use. I am concerned that we follow through on our sound and have that, make sure that staff has that available for the residents nearby as soon as possible. And secondly, is perhaps have it for the alderman to review as they go through the final approval. But I am voting yes.
Alderman Owens?
For the reasons previously stated by my fellow commissioners, I vote yes.
Chairman Harless?
And I also am voting yes. I think this will be a real crown in Germantown, a real jewel in Germantown's crown, and it will be nothing but a plus. I vote yes. With that, the motion is approved. We now go to the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, the first warrant of three. The proposed motion is to approve a warrant from section twenty-three dash seven fifty-eight to allow civic space within an area not designated on the regulating plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bacon?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Hicks? Yes. Alderman Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Chairman Harless?
Yes, and warrant number one is approved. Warrant number two?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed motion for warrant number two is to approve a warrant from section twenty-three dash seven ninety-two to allow the existing parking for G-PAC to remain as is and to be used for the new outdoor performing arts venue.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Bacon?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
We've gone back and forth on this, and it looks like there's ample parking based on the numbers that we've put in there. You know, there's also the food trucks. I counted some of those. I think they take up twenty spots or something there, but that still allows plenty of parking depending on which parameter you go by. So I don't feel that's a problem. I like, I appreciate the residents coming here to speak about that, but I don't see that, that parking's be a problem. And to bring up the good point of the, that Mr. Saunders brought up about the Fourth of July, I never considered that, that those parking spots were taken out and flooded in those neighborhoods. That was a good point that was brought up there. So with that being said, I'm voting yes.
Ms. Hicks? Yes. Alderman Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Chairman Harless?
Yes, and warrant number two is approved. Warrant number three?
Mr. Chairman, warrant number three, the proposed motion three, to approve a warrant from section six dash one oh two to allow a fence, quote, architectural.
from Section 6-102 to allow a fence, quote, "architectural" screen to vary in height from six feet to 10 feet in accordance with the approved site plan.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bacon?
Mr. Chairman, I'm voting to approve, as previously stated, I really like the design of the screen. I think it's very elegant and very, very well done.
Mr. Clark?
You know, I hesitated a long time on this. It's amazing what you can see when you move up closer to the screen and see exactly what you proposed there. I wish we had gotten that a little bit sooner so that we could review it and see it instead of seeing it on the fly here. Again, maintenance is an issue, but that's not really my concern, or not my parameters to look at there, but I'm voting yes.
Ms. Hicks?
Based on our conversations and understanding of better what the fence material will be, and that the height is visually eight feet, a lot of spies, but maybe even as high as 10, we don't have a maximum in the motion, but I believe it was 10 stated, I'm voting yes.
Alderman Owens?
Yes, I think it's a unique architectural feature that'll add to the entire project, and I vote yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Based on comments by my prior, made by my commissioner, I'll be voting yes.
Chairman Harless?
I'm going to ask that Mr. Ross and his staff get a copy of the architectural to the design review, even though we're going to approve it tonight, just so that we get their buy-in. I think they'll buy in once they see it and understand it, and with that, I vote yes, and warrant number three is approved, so all three warrants are approved, as well as the main project. I'd like to thank the audience for their participation, would encourage you to come back more often. Don't wait for another 37 years. Thank you very much, and is there any further business to be conducted?
Our next meeting is changed from normal, right?
The next meeting will be July the 10th, at the time to be determined, Mr. Ross?
Yes, we are waiting to see if we receive any boards on a field application next Wednesday, so once we determine if we get any application, we'll set.
Okay. So, we should know a week and a half, two weeks from now, and we'll get that out to you. Thank you, Mrs. Hicks.
Subcommittee is still regularly scheduled for June 20th, 5:30 in the morning.
Thank you. Thank you, Jody. With that, we stand adjourned.